We're all, Mr. Chairman.
Are we ready?
We are ready.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to convene the November 2nd meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me now in a moment's silence while we think about those brave troops that we have that are fighting for us and share with me the hope that all of the ones that are being sent, are going to be coming home from Iraq, do so in one piece. Thank you very much. Now it is time for public comment. Do we have anybody for public comment at this time? Hearing none will move. Did you have something?
She's not public.
Okay. The first item is Mass in Motion Public Leadership Grant, Beth Albert, Director of Human Services.
Christine Stein, this is great. Should I come up front?
Sure.
Yeah, please do. Come on down.
Oh, you should imagine Sheila is not here. She's not feeling well today, so she did call.
Under the weather, as they say.
We all hope she's here.
How does everybody feel?
Is it pressure?
No.
Thank you.
We have.
Yes. It's not on the agenda, though.
That's what I saw.
Is it the agenda?
Well, I have to take my job into account. I can understand.
So, I'm actually very pleased to be here today to announce this grant. It's a grant from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and it's a Mass in Motion Municipal Wellness and Leadership Grant. The Department of Public Health has had the Mass in Motion project for several years. They added about 11 more municipalities or counties this go-round, and it came from the Center for Disease Control. The money came from a community transformation grant from the Center for Disease Control. And so that funding was for 11 new Mass in Motion projects in the Commonwealth. They also got some other funding for additional things around tobacco prevention and some money for community health centers to work on some prevention around diabetes and some other chronic health care issues. But for our purposes today, it's the Mass in Motion Municipal Leadership Award. So, I just gave you all a copy of a press release we're putting out. It's a five-year grant. We don't have the final details yet, but what we're told is that we are going to be funded for what we applied for, which was $60,000 over five years. And it's essentially, I mean, what we have seen here is that several county departments are involved with health and wellness. And so this is a way for us to kind of collectively and collaboratively promote county-wide health and wellness initiatives, and we're very excited about it. Several departments met a few times over the spring, and then this opportunity came up, so we went with it. We were a bit, we had to go with what their strategies were, and we couldn't come up with our own strategies, but there was plenty to work with, and we think we picked a strategy around active lifestyles and around healthy eating. And so more to come as we roll this out. They're anticipating a January 1st start date. Christine Stein from our department is going to be leading the project, and it's good news.
Yes, very good news.
Congratulations. Of course, the thing I liked the most about it is the integration of all of the other departments along with this. You know, one of the things I think is very important for people to recognize is that our departments are not silos, you know, that we all try to work together as much as possible in order to serve, you know, the interest of everybody here. So, I'm delighted to see, you know, that particular piece, that's wonderful. Did you have anything, Beth?
Well, I was noting that the Buy Fresh Buy Local piece is part of it as well, in order to promote healthy eating, which I think is great. And Francine, I don't know if Francine ran that place, she'll have any participation in this, but I'm sure she would love to. You don't know Francine?
No, I don't.
Oh, she's, well, she puts on the Truro Agricultural Fair.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, and she is also involved in, is it Truro? It's the Truro Library. In the summertime, they have some of the children come in and they teach them gardening, and they raise all their vegetables and some, we took a tour, you remember, the county extension program. And she collaborates with some other people at the library, volunteers, I believe, to teach children about, and these children raise their vegetables and take them home and eat them, and they love them, and it's a great idea.
Yeah.
And I know she could be, if there were room in your grant, I'm sure she would be happy to play a role in that in some fashion.
When we went to that tour, we also were invited to go to a farmer's market that they'd had, and I remember going to that, and I was quite impressed. It was a truly a small-town effort to, you know, to get fresh vegetables from local growers out there. And it was, I think she was sort of in the prime.
Yeah, it was the Truro Agricultural Festival, if I'm not mistaken. What kind of, oh, I'm sorry.
No, you go.
I was gonna, what kind of programs, Beth, do you think that you will be starting in January? Exactly what are we doing?
Just as an overview, I'm gonna let Christine address this a little bit. It's really not to create new programs. A lot of this is about promoting policies that enable people to take this on. So, for example, instead of it being a program targeting individuals, it would be more changes in some policies that would make access to healthy foods more available, or access to an active lifestyle more available. So, I see it as a way to kind of raise up some of the wonderful things the county's already doing, not create new programs, tap into and highlight and promote some of the great community-based stuff that's going on, because what we found with, when we started, you know, working on Healthy Connected Cape Cod, was that there was so much going on, that it's like, how do you promote all the good work that's already being done, and then it's that connecting people to it? So, this is a little different. It's not a new program, per se. It's more promoting and advocating for policy changes to kind of increase, make it easier for people to have, you know, access active lifestyles and healthy eating, so.
Well, before you do that, while you're on the issue of policy.
Yes.
You may have seen recently, I think it was either the Barnstable paper or the Cape Cod Times, that the Cape has lost a significant amount of agricultural land over the years, you know, from way back. And I think some towns are working very hard to preserve the agricultural land they have for this purpose, you know, the Buy Fresh Buy Local. So, that might be something that you might be able to do, is to encourage towns not to rezone their agricultural land into business or residential, as the case may be, to preserve it with these goals in mind. So, that could have, I think, a tremendous effect on the Cape.
And one of the things I might, just to piggyback on that, is that we do have a lot of interest, and perhaps Bill Clark could, you know, could put you onto some of the farmers that are part of the Farm Bureau, that might be interested in supporting, you know, the local growers. I know we've been very successful, we've noticed an increase in the amount of local farmers' markets that they've had in different towns, and perhaps a direct contact with, you know, with the Farm Bureau. Leo Cocunis, who represents Harwich, is, I believe, the president of the Farm Bureau here over the Cape, and I know that he could be very supportive of, you know, of those sorts of things.
One other thing I wanted to mention, too, was just a few days ago, there was an article in, I forgot where, because I read a lot of stuff. It was a man who's probably now in his 40s, and he's been a diabetic since he was seven, and he decided that he did not want to become the kind of diabetic where you check your sugar in the morning and in the evening, and then modify your diet twice a day or whatever and adjust, that he wanted to be able to do all the things he liked to do, which was run, be very athletic, participate in sports. He didn't really want to, well, at that time, but as time went on, and we thought about the, what do you call them, the intravenous injections or the?
Insulin.
Yeah.
Insulin?
Yeah, the insulin automatic.
Yeah, the insulin pumps, yes.
Yeah, pumps, that's what it is. He didn't want to do that either. He thought that that was too much infringement on his athletic interests. So, at a very early age, he decided that he was going to modify what he eats during the course of the day, and each time he engaged in an activity like running or playing baseball or whatever, or eating, he would check his sugar and just modify it as he went along. And it worked out much, he's now a professor at a university in New Hampshire, and his whole life has been doing it that way, and now he's healthy, he doesn't have a lot of the issues diabetics have, with poor circulation, and any number of things that diabetics get. So, I thought that was, that's a learning thing. And the other thing he mentioned was that by eating organic foods, particularly organic vegetables, they take longer to digest than processed food that you would buy. The processed food seems to go through your system a lot faster, and so therefore, he was able to maintain his sugar levels better by eating organic foods. So, that's just, all right, now I've said it, it's your turn.
I just said it anyway. A lot of what you've said really ties into the goals that we have for this project. One of the projects I've already been working on with Ken.
Conkra.
Conkra, in the cooperative extension, is a project called Putting Healthy Foods on Pantry Shelves. And I won't go into the details of that right now, but it's been a year-long endeavor that's really involved a lot of collaboration with different entities, including two county departments. It's been very successful. One of the ways we're going to build on it through this grant is by putting, particularly in the spring, summer, fall, putting more fresh fruits, locally grown fresh fruits and vegetables on pantry shelves. So, we have some strategies that we helped employ to help that, and as you probably know, quite a few of the pantries have already started growing their own gardens. But we also want to encourage what's called Grow a Row, which is the federal program, which encourages farmers and just regular residents who have their own vegetable garden to grow a row and then donate those foods to pantry. The other quarter of that is increasing the number of locally grown fresh fruits and vegetables that the YMCA uses for their summer food program for income children. So, it very much ties into what you were saying about, you know, locally grown produce, encouraging that, tapping into local farmers and, yeah.
I have a question, and, you know, at one point, we had provided some support for lunches in the summertime. Is it the intention to try to incorporate that or to use, and I think the YMCA sort of stepped up and took that over.
They did, they did. And part of this grant, although we haven't heard definitively yet, is to provide an amount of money to YMCA to work with them specifically to have the fresh fruits and vegetables be part of that summer food program.
I had met with PJ.
Yeah.
Over at Hyannis, and he was talking to me about how important it was to the Y to increase their visibility in the community, especially in terms of what the YMCA was trying to do to support the community in many areas, of which this was one. So, that seems to tie in with what he was talking about.
And then else, I'm sorry, just to add, that they, this summer, they piloted actually delivering foods to some homes, as opposed to the children having to get to a site. And I haven't heard a lot about the results of that yet, but what I, anecdotally, what I heard was it was very well received, and that that would be developed more next summer, too.
I'm glad to hear that, because there was some concern that I had that in identifying a site, there would be food, as to whether or not transportation would be reasonably available to get there.
Well, I think in some of the cities now, you know, looking at having stores in more, how is it, in more locations.
Food deserts. They call them food deserts, where there's no market.
Yeah, so that people can go and get fresh vegetables and food.
It's, well, it's a huge problem in Philadelphia. I'm sure it's a huge problem in New York. I mean, the big cities seem in poverty, low-income neighborhoods.
It wasn't in the New York Times, two days ago.
Yep, was it two days ago?
Yeah.
I've read about it.
Yeah, because it was talking about Germantown in Quincy, Pennsylvania.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There are even a few, definitely a few on. Food deserts on the Cape. Your SDA has been mapping the food deserts, and they have criteria by which they decide, based on the number of low-income people in a, it's actually by zip code. So, the number of people within that zip code, the number of markets that would have fresh fruits.
There was no, I think the article said there was no supermarket in Germantown.
Could be.
And I think that was part of the reason why they didn't have access. But if you come off the, off the town's neck in Germantown, which is, you know, through Marymount, you're on the artery, and the artery has about three or four supermarkets there, but it might be a question of access.
So, just, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, part of this really, this grant too, and this work going forward, although I can't articulate exactly how this will look yet, is working with five-town health departments, and talking with George about this, and with the intent of the grant. Health departments don't have the resources or staffing to really look at some of the more public health issues, the more regulatory and things like that. And so, part of this would be looking at how we can help some of the health departments. And we targeted five towns, Barnstable, Harwich, Charleens, Dennis, and Moffleet. So, we'll be working with those health departments. So, and I have time for just one more very brief.
Oh, yeah, you have some.
Are we, do you have any other questions about this?
You have, you have 10 minutes.
Oh, I do.
Yes, no rush.
Just one last comment, and I have two, because we focus more on the healthy foods than the active living, is the collaboration with the commission, particularly around the pathways, the walking pathways and the bike pathways. So, that, I think that will be exciting, too.
That's great.
Thank you.
And one thing, you know, they do their walking weekend, that was just last month, that's one thing. And they do a spring one, too, and I can't remember what the spring one is called, but they have like, maybe it's the Pathways Weekend.
The lever's in the back, you could turn it.
No, he's a transportation guy.
Cable block.
Cable block, that's it, yeah.
Another interesting statistic that I don't know if you could follow in this program would be, if through healthy eating, there is reduction in the access to health care. Now, if you've got any statistics from the hospitals or any of the health care institutions on the Cape, are there fewer people accessing health care because they're living healthier, eating healthier, living healthier lives? That, because that could be really a reduction in the cost of health care if people were to do this.
Well, it's, you know who can answer that question? You have to turn around a little bit. Maggie knows from the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, and I know she's a member of this.
Right, which is all the times.
She knows what the top three costs are associated with the claims through the health group. Smoking is number two. It's not number one. Yeah, and it's kind of, the sedentary lifestyle is probably number one, which causes the heart problems and the diabetes issues and those types of things, so, so, yeah, Maggie can answer that question.
Yeah, maybe Maggie could, because Blue Cross, well, you had more than one provider done.
Blue Cross and.
But they, all the providers provide the statistics, don't they?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, so it would be something interesting to follow, to see if there's any change in the access to health care or the change in the predominant reasons why people access health care, whether.
Can I show that? Because of HIPAA and all that, we're talking about statistics at the 10,000-foot level, not individuals, what their own problems are.
But aren't they only for the Cape? Only for the group?
They're for the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. What I'm just saying is it's not, we don't know what individuals.
No, no, I know, and you don't want to know that. You just want to know the big numbers, yeah.
But what we do know from the evidence base from other similar projects is that it can take quite a few years for that to catch up, but definitely worth keeping in mind.
Just keeping in mind that there could be a real effect on the access and on the cost of health care if people were.
I don't know, one of the things, and I guess I need to check this out, because I don't know, is that the mass emotion on the state level, if they're looking at all at the, and to me, it would, it might not be access to your primary care physician, but it would be, chronic health conditions would be something that they would look at as far as, you know, if you're increasing your prevention efforts and promoting wellness, do you then see a reduction in chronic health issues like diabetes, heart conditions, obesity, things like that, so.
Anecdotally, when I went for my physical, Dr. Mariano reaches over, grabs a, grabs a love handle and says, you know, if you did some exercise, you get rid of that, so I think a lot of us could do that. I know it hasn't gone yet, but I have been exercising.
So.
What else did you have?
Just really quickly.
Can't find my HIPAA rule.
I also wanted to take a minute to announce that we did hire a coordinator for the Regional Network to address homelessness.
Oh.
Yes.
Paula Schnapp.
Paula Schnapp.
We've known her for a long time.
Paula was actually involved, one of the people who helped write the first ICHH grant when they did the Regional Network structure.
And she's also active in the Barnstable housing, I believe, probably.
Yes, so she's got a lot of work to do, and we're thrilled to have finally filled that consulting position.
And she's well-known in the community as well.
Yes.
And the funding for that is coming from?
From my budget, from the county budget. This is one of the positions that I included in line, fiscal year.
Well, that's what I wanted to, give yourself one of those. We're paying for it, not everybody else.
The county is paying for this position 100%, and it's something, you know, we're the commuting agency for the Regional Network. We're committed to it and hiring, getting money for a consultant is part of our commitment.
I'll extend our warm welcome to Paula.
I will do that.
Yes, that's great.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we'll bring her in at some point to do your update on what's going on.
These are pieces of things that are really important to her.
They are, I mean, they're.
Congratulations to you for applying, to even thinking of applying.
So, you know what I talked about, you know, when I was, is, you know, regional, nobody, you know, other do it, coordination, all of those, all of the things that are in our mission, and those are the kind of projects that we're focusing on, so.
Terrific, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.
So, I see you on the 18th?
Yes. And maybe before?
Maybe before, sure, you never know.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
The next thing.
Are you here for something, Mike? Or are you with, oh. We're not doing any biking then, huh? I guess.
Do you want us to talk about something?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, we have a couple of minutes before 3:00 on the updating municipal health reform.
Yeah.
Did you want to take that moment to take a look at the summary that made?
I did, already.
Okay, did you have any comment on that?
No, I have no comment, so I would.
There is one item that's part of this, is to appoint these members of the.
Oh, yeah, let's.
Of the renamed.
Well, let me, if I may, get to that.
Where's the list of the people who are funds, do you have that?
I don't know, I did not bring the summary.
I have.
Oh, you did.
It's probably in the package, though, if you want to look in the package.
This is number 11.
What's the number?
Vote to Reconstitute the, and I'll just speak to that if I could.
Sure.
Since I attend the Lyme Disease Task Force meetings. I don't know why, I don't think I'm a liaison, but I made myself a liaison, I guess. And so, we did have a meeting back on October 19th, and we really looked at the direction of the task force, where it has been, where it needs to go. The fact that it was called the Barnstable County Task Force, but we had members, we had people sometimes that came from, it was the Cape Cod Islands.
Right.
Lyme Disease Task Force. And we thought now that the Vineyard has their own group, and Antucket has its own group, and we thought, we don't want to disengage from either community, but we are really not anymore the Cape Cod Islands Task Force, we're really the Barnstable County Task Force, but they would be on our mailing list, we would invite them to our meetings and make them welcome, and share with them whatever we're doing, and they obviously would share with us what they're doing. So, then it was time to take a look at changing the name to the Barnstable County Lyme and Other Tick-Borne Diseases Task Force, because there are the.
It doesn't really sing, though. Doesn't really sing, though.
It doesn't sing, but it says what it's about, which is more than just Lyme disease.
Yes, it does, for sure.
I mean, this is group consensus, you know. So, the, so the members would be Brenda Bowen, who has been the chairman for some time now, and has been a long-serving member of the task.
God bless her. She's a terrific girl.
Yes, she really does. She cares so much about it. And Dr. Danta, Sam Danta, who is incredible, he attends all the time, he makes time for himself. Gay Freeman, this would be a new member, a primary care physician, who has volunteered her time. The same with Helen Grimm, who's a school nurse, and it's important, we felt it's important to have a school nurse on the task force because of the education in schools. And a school nurse knows what, what a school nurse deals with on a regular basis, so we were happy to have her volunteer. Henry Lind, who's the, who's already on the task force, is a natural resource officer in Eastham. And then Joyce McConnell, who's also an RN, and has had family experience with babesiosis, hard to remember how to say that word. So, anyway, that's what's before, so I absolutely recommend that we create, recreate the task force, appoint these members, and change the name.
Well, the best part of it is the fundraiser's continuing.
Yes.
Because she, such a wonderful fundraiser.
She does.
I'm so happy that she, you know, is still willing to participate.
Absolutely.
Okay, then are we, then are we ready to vote?
I will move the summary of items.
Okay, and I'll second that, and all those, are you okay, the discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I, and this includes what we have here.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good piece of work today.
Good. I do have another vote, if I may indulge you, and that vote is, the motion would be to approve the license plate budget for marketing expenses for 2012 in the amount of $37,000 in license plate funds.
Because that's a usual order.
That's a usual thing, yeah.
Is that number different from last year?
I think it's been.
About the same.
Consistently, yeah.
Yeah, consistently around the 40,000.
Their budget is 100, and we're around a third, a little bit more than a third, I would say.
Okay, I will move approval.
Okay, I'll second, and no further discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, and then, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you that floating around in the stratosphere here is the annual Mass Municipal Association Conference. It is January 20th and 21st, 2012, in Boston, of course, at the, at the Heinz and the Sheraton Hotel. So, you should let Kara, Kara's kind of coordinating what's going on, and I think you should, that you spoke.
I already have, yeah.
Figure out what you're doing. So, Bill, if you could do that, and I'll make sure Sheila knows that's floating around out here.
And I think that we go, I, you have, you have the mirror, is it the, the insurance thing on Saturday? Do you go to that?
Maya, he's talking about the Maya luncheon. I'll sign you up for that. Once we get registered, they'll send me a package, and I'll put you all on it.
And are you planning to go to the dinner Friday?
No.
Okay.
You usually do the WeMo lunch.
I do the WeMo lunch.
And I think there are some sessions Kara seemed to be asking about, that you have to sign up for, so you should check with her.
I might add that I have been asked to present a workshop on the pitfalls of hiring a town manager.
Oh, very impressive.
I told them I'd be very happy to do that.
I'm sure you have a successful side of the panel.
Particularly how the open meeting law intersects with the process of hiring a town manager, every step of the way, because it's the selectmen who do the hiring, you have to constantly, everything you do, you have to look at the open meeting law and see what you can do, what you can't do, does it have to be posted, does it not have to be posted, what is the subcommittee, who's, oh, believe me. So, I'm going to make a presentation.
What was Caesar's wife's name?
Caesar?
Was it Portia? You have to be, you know, it's like, you have to be so pure. Sort of takes all the fun out of it.
Well, you have to make sure that you, you know, are not found, not in compliance with the open meeting.
Oh, well, I've been reminded.
Especially if you have watchdogs.
Well, you're, there was just, the case came down about the Sandwich School Committee and their action on the, because it wasn't a posted meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, it worked out good for the town of Sandwich, the way they wanted it, but it was not valid, because they didn't have a posted meeting. So, that's what you have to, you know, those are the things you're trying to avoid.
Absolutely.
So, caused problems. And then the final thing I have, and then I'll text Maggie and have her come in, is here's my weekly report, and Beth talked about one thing already on that. I do want you to know that in conjunction with publishing our annual report, which Elaine is working on, in here you have the list of pending litigation for Barnstable County, and it's just a list, and we put that in the annual report, as I said. And what I will do is have Bob Troy at a future meeting come in just to kind of give you an update on what those are and what those are about. I did want you to know that the septic system test center has entered into an agreement with the town of Barnstable to cite one of the alternative septic systems at the Barnstable Wastewater Treatment Center. That's the first time we've done this. It's, we think it's a good thing, provides an excellent opportunity for the test center to obtain data on this kind of new technology that they're testing, and for the vendor data, it's a tested system. So George is very enthusiastic about that. He did a terrific job working with the town of Barnstable to get that cited.
You know, I think this is a really important thing, because I think other towns are going to want to explore alternatives or at least have data on the exploration of alternatives. Not necessarily every town doing it themselves. And I did finally connect with George and had a tour of that facility two months ago in the summer, and it was a tree called a... And it was really fascinating, and the fact that his, that program is so well-respected, not around the state, but also nationally. I mean, it really is. Major companies look to him to, to test these devices for them, and they have absolute confidence and trust in his ability to do it. And he's so smart, because he, he also has a set aside in terms of if for any reason it ever had to be closed down, we wouldn't have to scramble around for funds to do that. There are funds available if we ever had to stop using it for the intended purpose, that we'd be able to do that. He really does things very well.
He does, and George is very good, he's very thorough, he knows what he's doing. One, I do want to mention DEP, because really, the Department of Urban Health Protection has funded the test center for us, we've gotten grants every year. George is very good at getting grants, but they get something out of it, too, because they get the data.
Exactly.
And what these systems are capable of, and in some cases, what they're not capable of. So they appreciate it, too. But we should put a thank you out to DEP, because they're funding it.
Good.
And then I did want to mention, from wearing my retirement association hat, that the Retirement Association notified all the unit treasurers that Mark Foley, the deputy fire chief in Eastham, was declared the elected member of the retirement board for the next three-year term, starting January 7th, 2012, through January 6th, 2015. Mark was the only candidate to file nomination papers for that position. So instead of holding an election with one person on the ballot, we declare the person not elected.
So that's why we didn't receive a...
That's why you didn't receive a ballot this time, yeah. And then I also want you to know that yesterday I was at the Town of Chatham, meeting with their Board of Selectmen and their finance committee, and I gave them a presentation on the pension system. I detached a copy of it for you to take a look at. I'll be pleased to give that to you at some meeting in the future. I think it's very helpful, the session went very well. I sort of prefaced my remarks on GASB OPEV, there's a little confusion about what's pension and what's GASB OPEV. So I talked a little bit about that to the, to the town, and I think they were very appreciative. I think the presentation went pretty good, so that was good. And then just finally, just to let you know that we just got the October Registry of Deeds numbers, and fairly good news on the deeds tax. It was about $550,000 for the month, 546, 793, to be exact. It's 7.2% ahead of the same period of last year. And overall, year-to-date, we're just a little bit behind, 2.8% for the same period as last year's.
Now, that must mean that there are other periods during the year that are higher.
It does, it goes up and it goes down, even if you looked at the first four months.
Spring maybe is a higher.
Yeah, February is usually low, it's dependent on the weather, January can be dependent on the weather, May and June are usually higher, because December can be higher, people are rushing to get things done before the end of the federal tax year, those types of things.
Now, I know that this is only one part of our revenue source, but I really appreciate having this information, because the Assembly of Delegates is really on a, on a concern trip. They are really worried about the budget. And I said to them, why would you worry about something over which you have no control? I mean, you have no responsibility for that. All you do is prove it. And granted, you have a certain responsibility in acknowledging that the budget that was prepared and presented to you was reasonable, that it was not overly ambitious and maybe not too conservative. So you really have to measure your budget against those two criteria. But at the same time, they are worrying themselves into, into what actions they think they need to take as their finance committee as to whether or not they should present to us some curtailments or some reductions over from now until whatever month, so.
Well, personally, I would resist their, let's say, their interest. I would accept their interest, but I would resist following up on anything.
Wait, let me, let me answer the question. I don't know if you were there a couple of weeks ago when I gave my presentation on the Treasury.
No, I wasn't there.
I think, Pat, that went a long way with the finance committee explaining how the ups and downs can work. It's, so you, you know, I think there was a focus on, oh, the deeds number, you have to look at, you know, you can't look at it one piece, you have to look at the overall picture. And so when the treasurer's report came out in, at the end of August, we scheduled a session with the finance committee that I did a presentation on the treasurer's report, explained how all of the ins and outs and ups and downs work. And I think that went a long way to helping them feel better about how the projections work and how I think the county financially has put us in a position where we can suffer through successfully the volatility. We've sort of cushioned out the volatility with reserves and some other things that we have out there where we don't have to worry if we're 2% or 3%. If we're 10%, or 12%, or 20%, we have to start worrying. But I think if you're within this kind of zone of comfort, we'll be okay.
So you think you kind of are...
I think they felt much better about that, yeah. Now, not everybody was there, because it was finance committee, so sometimes, you know, you don't cover all the bases, but I think it was a good deal.
So you're suggesting you're actually attempting to do money management in this area?
No, I think, Bill, that we've financially put ourselves in a position where we don't have, have to worry about some of the volatility that's inherent in the revenue stream we have. There's just, we've sort of taken that out. Now, that's not to say, if, you know, you have a 20% drop, that's a problem, and you have to deal with it upfront. You can't sit around and wait and say, well, I hope it gets better tomorrow. You have to get in front of it and say, well, you have to freeze this or freeze that, or, you know, sort of stop expenditures, and if you can get to a drastic point, you have to cut expenditures. But I think we've taken out the normal volatility, let me say.
In my past history, the governance reporting was essential to manage the operational and commercial activity. And one of the questions we get asked on a regular basis at the Assembly is, something that leads to, what is the, what is the number that we arbitrarily selected that we have to be, to be concerned? 20% is, you know, an enormous variance.
I don't mean to suggest I'm giving you a number.
All right, but I'm saying that 20% is an enormous variance, but...
It is, exactly. Right, that's why I don't want to pin myself in.
And at that point, I think we would have to make some serious, serious decisions if we're going forward.
Are we done?
I'm done.
You're taking away that much time. We're eating, we're 10 minutes into our time.
Right.
But that's good, we can always come back if we have...
Okay, so you were, Mr. Chairman, are you ready to move on? Is this really a copy for Sheila? I have a copy for Sheila, too, now. No, I have a copy for her. No, I covered all my bases. So, Mr. Chairman, I do...
We're talking, we're having an update on municipal healthcare reform, and there was some suggestion as to whether or not it would be a potential executive session. Are you recommending that if you want?
I am. This is really not about the healthcare reform in terms of what changes are we making to plans, it's more of the strategy that Maggie and I want to adopt relative to going forward.
Okay, so then it is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining.
I have the motion for you here, Mr. Chairman. First of all, you must declare that in open meeting, they have detrimental impact, blah, blah, blah.
I have to read the, is this protocol right? Because I have to read this in contact.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we also...
And I don't, I don't think we're coming back out of...
Back to open session.